Good evening. I'd like to call and order this Campbell City Council Study Session for Tuesday, July 19th at 6:30 PM. I'll ask that the record reflect that each council member, mayor and vice mayor are here, and we can move on to new business, which is envision Campbell General Plan Update with consultants.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. I'm Ben Ritchie, Principal with de novo Planning Group, and this is our General Plan Update kickoff meeting. So, very pleased to be here, and we're off and running on this project. So, what I'd like to go over this evening, I have a summary of our process, so kind of the work program and what we're going to be doing, overview of the G-PAC, the General Plan Advisory Committee, their roles and expectations. We've already held our first G-PAC meeting. We put a great group together, so the first meeting was very successful. Summary of our public outreach and community involvement strategy and programs that we have, and then a summary of the completed ongoing tasks and also the next steps in the process. Probably about a 10 to 15-minute presentation, and if you have any questions, please interrupt me. This is meant to be for you, so your time. So if you have any questions of me or anything you'd like me to expand upon, by all means. So, as the council is certainly aware, but for the benefit of the public, the purpose of your general plan is to define a long-term vision for future growth and resource management within the city generally over the next 20 years. It's intended to be a very Campbell-specific plan and document, and needs to reflect the goals and values of the city and the community here in Campbell. It's intended to build upon recent city planning efforts, so I know you've got some work underway and recently completed on some master plans and area plans, and not necessarily tossing those out the window, but building off of those and taking it to the next level with your general plan. We have an extensive public outreach and community participation program interwoven throughout the next two or so years as we complete the general plan update. And ultimately, the document itself seeks to balance growth, conservation, and quality of life, and be very specifically catered to the needs, priorities, and challenges that this community faces at this point in time and for the next 20 years. A little summary of the process. We have some key documents and key steps. So, we start by identifying community priorities. The G-PAC is the primary vessel for this. We also have some other techniques and strategies such as Peak Democracy, which is linked through the Campbell General Plan Update website. So, the online forum is there. We have a Contact Us button. We're going to be doing online polls and surveys as well. We have a series of neighborhood meetings that we'll be doing a little bit later in the process. So, identifying community priorities and really setting the trajectory and the vision for Campbell is one of our key first steps, and that is ongoing and underway. We're also in the process of preparing the Existing Conditions Report. It's called the Background Report. It's pretty self-explanatory. It's going to be a technically-heavy document that establishes our baseline conditions in terms of demographics, environmental conditions, traffic conditions, population, economics, things like that. We then prepare what's called an Issues and Opportunities Report. So, this will be a detailed, robust summary of the public outreach and the feedback that we've gotten from the public. Starts to identify some of the key themes and challenges that we'll be tackling as part of the general plan update, and starts to lay the groundwork or set the stage for the types of policy direction we may pursue in order to accomplish some of these policy objectives. We also prepare what's called a Land Use Alternatives Report. I've got a slide dedicated to that because I know it's usually a very hot-button topic or one that folks have high level of interest in. We'll be developing general plan goals, policies, and programs, and this is really where the G-PAC is going to earn their money and be heavily involved in the process of crafting the draft goals, policies, and programs that go into the general plan. We'll then bring the preliminary draft of the general plan and the Climate Action Plan to the city council and the Planning Commission for a series of joint workshops, get you guys to where you're really comfortable with the content, make sure you've had a chance to vet everything, put your mark on it, before we move forward to a public review and comment with an actual complete draft document. We also have our CEQA compliance stage, and then we move forward into adoption hearings. Public participation opportunities are provided at every stage, and it's interwoven throughout the work program. So, just a couple of those things that I mentioned, I'll expand on a little bit more. The Land Use Map Alternatives Report is going to be focused around three or four land use map alternatives that we come up with. These will be developed through G-PAC input, input from staff, input from the council and Planning Commission as to the level that you choose to have input on coming up with these alternatives. We'll attempt to make the alternatives different enough to provide meaningful comparison between them. So, one may focus more on economic development. One may focus on intensification of land uses in certain areas. One may have more of a residential focus. And so, they'll be different enough to provide sort of a meaningful comparison. And each map will be accompanied by a supporting analysis that identifies what the build-out potential is in terms of population growth, number of housing units, potential jobs generation, square footage of non-residential uses, your commercial, lead industrial-type uses, and also supporting analysis in terms of traffic implications, economic and fiscal implications, implications for natural resources, things like that, so that you aren't just looking at three or four different land use maps that all have a bunch of red, orange, and yellow on them, and how do you really understand the nuanced differences. So, this supporting analysis hopefully is going to be a very valuable tool, and it'll move us towards the preferred land use map, which is what will end up in your general plan. And it will not be one of the three or four that we come up with. I call them the Franken map, so we'll take the best characteristics from a few. You might like number two best, but change it to do X, Y, and Z. But it's a great starting point for coming up with what your actual land use map will look like. In terms of the content of the general plan, we have our seven mandatory state elements. These include land use, circulation, housing, conservation, open space, safety, and noise. Your housing element was completed and adopted in 2015, so that's not a part of our work efforts at this time. If anything we do as part of this general plan update has implications for your recently adopted housing element, we'll identify those and prepare a technical memo identifying targeted things that may need to be revisited. Please.
If I may speak to that. I think councilmember Christina and I both were conscious of the fact that we did have the recently developed housing element, but that it is possible it would need to be tweaked based on the land use scenarios. So, it would not come to us as a surprise at this point.
Excellent. We have a lot of flexibility as far as combining elements, having them stand alone. Obviously, all the mandatory elements will be prepared and included. If we combine conservation and open space, great. If we keep them as separate elements, we'll work with you to figure out your preferences, but the actual content won't change depending on how we combine or slice and dice different elements. The city also has tremendous amount of leeway in selecting optional elements to include. So, our work program includes the preparation of an economic and fiscal sustainability element, a community services and facilities element, community health and wellness, sustainability, and also an implementation element that combines all of the action items and puts some timing priorities to them and identifies how the plan will actually be carried out. And the sustainability element will be key in tying your Climate Action Plan to the general plan. So, it'll be the link between those two documents, and your Climate Action Plan will be a little more tangible as far as concrete steps to implement over the next several years. Climate Action Plan, as I mentioned, it's going to be prepared as a standalone document. We'll do this concurrent with the general plan update. Overall, it's going to assist the city in meeting the statewide greenhouse gas reduction goals established by AB 32, and there's also been a series of executive orders issued since AB 32 was passed in 2006. So, we'll be coming back to work with you on establishing reduction targets. We'll ask the city council to provide us with the direction on what reduction target we're striving to achieve. We'll provide some suggestions and information about how other jurisdictions are handling this and where the state law takes us.
Thank you. So, I think staff's let you know already, but at the Community Choice Joint Powers Authority last week, we made a decision that we are going to be going 100% greenhouse gas-free. So, that should help a lot.
It does. I was pleased to see that email.
And there are some other decisions that the council may be asked to make related to other actions and recommendations from the JPA that will come back and filter through this.
We look forward to that. And we build our projections. So, your reduction target is actually going to be tied to a 2005 base year, and we'll project out business as usual so that things that have taken place, like the switch to clean energy that happened prior to adoption of the Climate Action Plan, still count as credits towards your 2005 business-as-usual projection, which makes everybody's life easier as far as the plan reaching the reduction targets. So...
Thank you so much for saying that, because that is a really important point in terms of the city's perspective on dealing with what the Climate Action Plan document's going to reflect. That makes a big, big difference.
Yes.
The other item that I would put in, which is a slight twist, but for general information, one of the debates that was held by the board the other day was how do you count solar, excuse me, residential solar? And we are doing community development directors, I think we did 240 last year, and we're trending towards 220, 240 this coming year. So, we're doing quite a few of those. And those are being looked at as reduction in demand, not renewable resources. So, there's a little bit of a twist in how that's going to be looked at, and that might influence some of your projections as well. So, just FYI.
I appreciate that. There'll be nuances on how we model that towards demonstrating compliance, but we'll...
Yeah. And you may not know, some of the businesses in Campbell, such as the Coles, the entire roof there is already solar panels. So, we have a lot of innovation and capacity.
I'm very pleased to hear that, and as I mentioned, that makes our job quite a bit easier on the drafting of the Climate Action Plan. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Very briefly, as you know, the general plan is subject to CEQA, California Environmental Quality Act. One of the unique things about our approach when we prepare general plans, the same team of planners, we do the EIR as well. And so, we look to provide a lot of efficiencies. So, I mentioned the Existing Conditions Report. That's written with later utility for the EIR in mind. So, we write our Existing Conditions Report, much like an environmental and regulatory setting for an EIR. Additionally, we always strive to have our general plans be self-mitigating to the extent feasible. I call it the tail-wagging the dog. You spend all this effort writing a general plan. You hammer out the policies and the action items. Then you do environmental review and realize you have impacts. So, you have an EIR informing what should be in your general plan, and it's not the right approach. So, your general plan preparers are also your EIR preparers. And as we're crafting policies for, say, creek setbacks and wetland protections, we have CEQA in mind. So, when it comes time to actually finish writing the EIR, instead of coming up with new mitigation measures, we're saying, implement that policy, implement this action item. And so, frankly, shouldn't be any new mitigation in your EIR because we built those into the plan itself, and we thought about CEQA as the plan came together. So, it saves you time, money, and it also, when you go to implement this thing, you aren't looking at an EIR and a general plan to figure out what your actual rules are. They all live within the policy document. All right. So, as I mentioned, identifying community priorities is a key initial step in our work program. The G-PAC is the primary vehicle for articulating community priorities and concerns to our team. So, the next couple of slides, I actually poached from the G-PAC meeting last week, so just give you a sense of some of the introductory overview information I gave them. The G-PAC is intended to serve as community liaisons and project ambassadors. We hope that all G-PAC members during their interactions with friends, neighbors, colleagues, et cetera, they're communicating the intent of the general plan. They're gathering public input. They're helping to identify community values and priorities beyond just their own lens and their own little spheres of influence in Campbell. And they're coming up with community-wide issues for the general plan to address. So, community liaison action is a very key component of the G-PAC's mandate and responsibility as we see it. Another key resource we have that you'll hear me mention over and over for the next two years is the General Plan Update website. It's campbell.generalplan.org, and it's going to be the complete one-stop clearinghouse for information. Draft documents, maps, this PowerPoint will be up there later this week, all upcoming meetings. So, basically, anybody who has any interest or any curiosity about the general plan, send them to the website. Should answer all their questions. You can contact us. I know the city put a lot of thought and effort into setting up Peak Democracy. That's linked directly through the general plan website. It's linked through the city's website as well. So, just one more tool for gathering community input on key priorities. So, some of the information we gave the G-PAC as far as their purpose, they're intended to serve as a sounding board for the general plan team, provide us with guidance on high-level vision, goals, and policies, review and provide input on land use and transportation alternatives, and represent the community's interests and serve as ambassadors. It is not our intention for the G-PAC to resolve issues of detailed policy. You get 19 people in a room trying to wordsmith. It isn't the best, most efficient approach, but as long as the policy direction is clear, I think their job has been accomplished. They understood and took this very well, that they don't make final decisions on any issue. They're an advisory body, and the buck stops with the city council. And so, the G-PAC can send us down one path as far as policy guidance, and if the council has different preferences or ideas, the council will certainly prevail as far as the content of the general plan. And we also ask that they don't take positions on issues not brought before the committee. Basically, we're going to keep it focused on the general plan when we have discussions. As far as sort of the nuts and bolts, staff and the consultant team, we're going to facilitate the meetings. We're not going to have a chair and co-chair of the G-PAC. We're asking them to operate in the spirit of consensus. So, that doesn't mean we have to have a 100% consensus on all issues and items. We're not doing roll-call votes. We'll do straw polls. You know, if we've got two points of view, and you could take Path A or Path B, I'll do a show of hands to get a sense of it's, you know, is it 14 to 2, or is it evenly split? Just getting a sense of where they are. And there's going to be times and issues where the G-PAC doesn't see eye to eye amongst themselves. And so, what we're going to do is we're not going to allow disagreement among the G-PAC members to slow down the process. We're not going to let roadblocks pop up. So, what we'll do is we'll agree to disagree. I'll have detailed notes on what the differing points of view are, and at key milestones throughout the process, I'll be checking in with the council, and I'll let you know. You know, G-PAC's divided on this issue. Here are the kind of pros and cons to each train of thought. Counsel, how would you like us to proceed with this particular policy issue? And the G-PAC's aware of that, and they're on board. All G-PAC meetings are open to the public, and the public is certainly welcome and encouraged to attend. However, in order to make the most optimal use of the G-PAC's time together, the discussion is going to be amongst G-PAC members. So, we're not structuring informal public comment periods during the G-PAC, and the public's asked not to try and chime in and participate in the roundtable discussions. So, I think I'll just kind of skip through this. Basically, we asked them all to be courteous, ask questions. Part of my job as a director of this project is to educate the G-PAC. There's a definite learning curve. Many of them haven't been involved in a general plan update, but that doesn't mean they aren't going to have completely articulate, on-point thoughts and opinions about how Campbell should proceed for the next 20 years. So, our job is to walk them through it and take their thoughts and translate it into general planese. And just some other basic courtesies up there. Basically, just be on time, be ready, and stay on topic. This says about the same thing. Be on time, stay on topic. So, G-PAC responsibilities. The overall goal of the G-PAC and their time together will be a draft general plan and a draft climate action plan that are prepared and submitted to the Planning Commission and city council for further review, input, and refinement. And of course, the council will have the final word regarding the content of the general plan and the climate action plan. But by the last G-PAC meeting, we are going to have a cover-to-cover general plan with a land use map comprehensive with policies, and it's going to be a full and complete document. It'll have additional refinement through the council and through the Planning Commission, but their time together is going to bear fruit in that by that last meeting, they're going to have a copy of this thing, and hopefully feel pretty darn proud about the content because they are going to see their input in this plan. We don't have boilerplate, cookie-cutter things that we pull off and change the name to Campbell and pass it off as your general plan. So, each G-PAC member is really going to see their input reflected in this document. So, as I mentioned, we have a very robust community participation and outreach program. I'll just go through it briefly. We're going to do a series of five neighborhood workshops. We'll work with staff to sort of divide the city into five informal district neighborhoods for meeting purposes, and we'll be holding intensive workshops in each of these five areas of the city. We have a total of 20 meetings scheduled with the G-PAC. When we have most of a draft general plan put together, and we'll work with you guys and staff on the best time for this, we'll do a community-wide, open-house-style workshop to present the plan and answer questions and get additional feedback. We have up to three meetings scheduled with various city boards, commissions, and committees, so we'll work with staff to figure out the most optimal use of time and which topics and which dates. We're planning on doing four joint workshops with the Planning Commission and city council. Again, we're flexible. We'll serve at the pleasure of the council, but we found them to be productive. What we don't like to do is have a whole bunch of workshops with the Planning Commission before the council's really had a chance to sink their teeth into the document, and the Planning Commission sends us one way, and the council has different ideas. So, I've found that we get everybody together in one room, and the council and Planning Commission can have a collaborative discussion and give us some more clear direction on how to finalize the draft of this document. We'll be checking in periodically. We have a minimum of six council meetings and hearings, and if there are key points in time where you want an update from me, or you've got questions, or I've got questions of you, I'll be here. So, extra council meetings are not going to be a problem as far as our work program. And then, budgeted, we have another additional four public meetings that we're just kind of keeping as a to-be-determined at this point, and the appropriate need and use of those meetings will reveal itself as we get through this process. As far as our outreach, I mentioned the general plan website. We'll do community presentations periodically. So, whether that's church groups, or Rotary, or the Chamber, we'll publish a series of newsletters. We're getting the first one pretty close to ready, and it should go out in the next couple of weeks. We'll do those at key milestones. They'll provide updates on what we're up to, how the public can get involved, key issues that we're facing at the time. We'll do interviews with key stakeholders. So, those may be, you know, planning directors from neighboring cities, staff from VTA, the Air District, things like that. We have online surveys. There's the Peak Democracy Online Forum. City staff is maintaining a list of folks that request to be on the General Plan Update email list about upcoming meetings. And then, I'll also provide monthly written status reports to council. I don't plan on being here to present every single one of them monthly, but if you feel you need to see my face, or I haven't seen you in a while, I'll miss you guys, and I'll come show up in person and give you guys an update. But if you ever feel you need me here, just give a call, and we'll come on down. All right. Some of the completed tasks we've finished to date. Some of these are underway as well. We've done our project kickoff and collection of data. We have reams. Fortunately, the reams are largely electronic, but we have a whole lot of data we've collected. The website is completed and live, so that's up there. We've done our first G-PAC meeting last week. Very successful. We've drafted sections and analysis of the Existing Conditions Report, and that is ongoing. And we've also done quite a bit of data collection and compilation of facts and figures for the Climate Action Plan's greenhouse gas baseline inventory. Pending tasks for the next couple of months, as I mentioned, we'll get that first newsletter out here shortly. We'll get the Existing Conditions Report wrapped up. We'll refine and finalize the baseline greenhouse gas inventory. We'll continue moving through meetings with the G-PAC, and we'll begin drafting the Issues and Opportunities Report. And then, again, monthly, you'll see status reports from me coming to you guys. As promised, the General Plan Update website. It's campbell.generalplan.org. All things general plan will be there, and it's a great source of information. And that essentially wraps up my presentation. So, at this point, if you have any questions, feedback, and then if you wanted to spend this time, I really defer to the council on what you'd like to talk about. So, if you want to start sharing your thoughts and priorities on key issues for the general plan to address, or questions about the work program, I'm here to answer and discuss anything you'd like.
All right. So, if there's comments or questions, we can just go along the line and do what we can. We may be a little more informal since we've got a study session. We've got a little while. Councilmember Katsk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the points that you had brought forward was within the study, and I don't know which slide it was on. There was a discussion about the various city managers and planners from different communities being involved. And this is one of the things that's always concerned me because of the developments that are going on around us. And even though we're somewhat parochial, probably very parochial, in our own general plan study, much of what we do is going to depend on much of what they do. And this is, I don't know how intense that is going to be. We've had things before us in terms of planning right now, and talking about the Dell Avenue Plan, our studies on that, when we get back into it again, which I assume will now become a part of our new general plan. The people that live down in those areas are very, very concerned because of what our neighbor Los Gatos is doing in terms of huge development, and how's that going to affect us, and is our general plan study going to go out and reach into that and at least do some guestimates or estimates on traffic patterns, and also how the housing density situation may change.
You're spot on as far as the key issues that we'll be trying to flesh out when we do that outreach to neighboring jurisdictions. So, the traffic model is based on regional traffic flows. So, VTA's model is based on the growth projections from all of the jurisdiction cities and counties within their service area. So, the traffic is, the modeling and projections will account for the growth in the neighboring jurisdictions. The key thing we'll be focusing on is, A, understanding what their plans call for. So, what are the general plan densities and intensities surrounding Campbell that could feasibly occur? B, what development projects have been recently completed or are in the pipeline or even reasonably foreseeable? Oftentimes, when we're doing these meetings, it's planner-to-planner, and it's not their planning director in public necessarily speaking at the dais to their council, so we can have some more candid discussions about the types of things. They're like, well, you know, we got rumblings from this applicant that he may file in the next couple of years or in the next couple of months. So, hopefully, it helps us get a more accurate sense of what they genuinely anticipate. I can never guarantee how much information any one individual will share, but having an understanding of what can reasonably be expected along your borders, and then taking that information and allowing Campbell to determine what you want to do with that knowledge. So, if you're seeing high intensity on the other side of the road, are you attempting to match it? Are you trying to turn your back on it? Are you trying to buffer it with open space? And these are all completely hypotheticals, but with an understanding of what's happening on your doorstep, that can influence how your plan comes together in terms of land use and policies. We also expect to incorporate a number of policies that candidly, they'll be redundant with what you're probably already doing, but they're calling for regional coordination, cooperation with neighboring jurisdictions, good neighbor policies about sharing information about pending projects, and allowing inter-jurisdictional communication. What we don't necessarily, what we don't intend to do, though, is to allow the neighboring cities to have much of a heavy hand at all in influencing what goes into your plan. This is your plan, and it will be done to your preferences and your standards, but that's certainly going to be influenced by what's happening next door.
Just to build off that, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Katsk, so one of the land use programs that we know our surrounding city, San Jose, is doing is the transit villages. So, as our consultant just mentioned, they're going to look at the policies and programs that's, for example, San Jose is working on, and then involve the G-PAC in this discussion of how would we want to either embrace what San Jose's doing or coordinate with what San Jose's doing as their development, like, say, on Winchester Boulevard or Bascom, enters into Campbell, and then how's that coordinated, especially for Bascom, because we share a lot of that street system. And I know previously in your work programs, you've talked about creating a Bascom Avenue area plan. In fact, it's actually in our general plan now. So, those are the types of discussions that we're going to elaborate on and build on with the G-PAC as it relates to development in adjacent cities.
All right. So, a couple of questions initially. First of all, as you mentioned, there's some folks in the G-PAC who are newer to this process than others. And some of the questions you're going to be presenting to them, which is, you know, sort of growth versus, you know, maybe a financial stimulus kind of model, those kinds of things. Do you allow timing your programs to talk about what that means, about will cities do need to, you know, have budgets, and they have services, and I think, you know, that sort of basic level of understanding of the reasons why you might want to go with a financial, some financial stimulus as opposed to just no growth, those kinds of things?
Absolutely.
And how do those conversations go? I mean...
The, most G-PAC members we've dealt with in other communities where we've done general plans, most G-PAC members have not had planning experience and have not worked on general plans. But they know what they think, and they're there to work and listen and learn. And the educational curve over the course of 20 meetings is phenomenal, and very much, a big part of my job is education and guidance and mentorship for them. So, what we do, and I actually appreciate the question because I didn't really touch on how the G-PAC meetings are going to function. They're a bit of a cyclical, there's a cycle to them. So, we'll spend our first couple of meetings talking big picture. So, what's the vision for Campbell, and what are our priorities and challenges? And then, we'll begin to move through individual topics. There's a lot that goes into the general plan, as you know. So, we'll take bites, and we'll have a meeting dedicated to conservation, and a meeting dedicated to open space, and one dedicated to safety. And so, we'll start those meetings when we introduce a new topic, just sort of talking about it. In terms of conservation, here's the types of things we address in the general plan. Here's some of the ways you've addressed it in your current plan. Here's some information that could be useful from the Existing Conditions Reports. What do you think? What are your priorities? And it just starts as this organic conversation, and we get some ideas, and I give some examples on how a general plan might address that. And once we've introduced two, maybe three, new topics, we go back behind the scenes, and we put together a draft policy set, and we bring in, it reads like, it reads like a general plan element, just without all the bells and whistles and color. And we'll spend the next meeting reviewing that in detail. So, hey, here's the things you told me. Here's a set of policies that address the concerns that you brought to me. Plus, you didn't mention some things that should be addressed in your general plan, so we went ahead and put those policies into. And what it does is it gives us a feedback loop, so they don't spend 14 months talking new topics, and then I bring a policy set and say, hey, remember a year and a half ago when we talked about this? Did I get it right? We go through cycles, so we do that every couple of months. It stays fresh in their minds. And so, we try and strategically tackle some of the less com- and strategically tackle some of the less complex, less controversial topics early on. So we often start off with noise and safety. There's not usually a lot of controversy or disagreement on those topics. And by the time we start getting to real big things, like economic development, circulation, we've really found our footing on what we're trying to accomplish with the plan. And the other thing I told the G-PAC is, whether you like it or not, please trust me, we're going to do land use near the end of our time together. And they're going to say, like, but how can we talk about conservation policies if we haven't figured out the land use map? And my answer is usually, just trust me, we've done this a lot. By the time we get to the land use map, you'll understand collectively where we're going as a group, and actually putting those map options together becomes much more focused and productive. So by the time, so when we start talking about balancing land uses for fiscal sustainability, or spurring economic development, we've had a chance to really bring them up to speed on the learning curve of general plans and how they function. And again, my job is partial mentor to bring them up to speed. And that's another place where the land use alternatives report really comes into play, because we try and provide that written analysis. So if there's one that's very residential-heavy, and you don't see job growth under it, what's that going to mean to the jobs-housing balance? What are the fiscal implications for the city as far as providing the same quality level of services, and just sort of explaining the pros and cons, and ramifications of different growth scenarios?
Okay. Thank you. And I'll just let my colleagues know, I at least have one public comment card. I'll find, I'm going to allow a few more questions here, let him answer them. Let the folks in the audience know, if anybody else who wants to do public comment, please fill out a card, and I'll get to that in just a minute. Councilmember Reston.
Thank you. It'd be brief. Thank you for the overview, because not just the responsibilities of the G-PAC, but your explanation just now of the timing of the issues, of how you get to ultimately, and the open land use as an example, is really useful, and makes a lot of sense. Did you mention the scheduling of the 20 meetings or so, of how that goes? Is that a regular meeting? Did I miss that? Regular meetings? Is this pre-planned? Does it depend on what sections you're on at a given time?
We're generally going to hold them once a month, but we're going to not do any for the next couple of months.
I knew that the next one was not for a few months.
Yeah, so it's at a date to be determined now. We want to have the existing conditions report wrapped up, so that they have, they get homework before each meeting, so we provide them with packets that, we try and go about two weeks prior, so they're not cramming the night before a class. So that they'll have reading materials, and our hope and expectation is that they come to each meeting having read those materials, and they're prepared to hit the ground running at each one. What we're going to be doing is sketching out at least six to eight months in advance the meeting dates, and we're going to try to have some regularity, so whether that's the second Monday of the month. Generally, once we really hit our stride, I would expect one a month. When we get to crunch time, we may go every three weeks or so. But there's a lot of information to digest, and the turnaround puts a burden on us, and also them getting all those materials. But generally, it'll be a consistent daytime once a month, and we'll sketch out the topics that we plan to address at each meeting, and reserve the right to make adjustments if appropriate.
Okay. Fair enough. Two-week lead time on packets. What a concept. Does that not sound incredibly good?
We strive. We're committed to 10 days. We're striving for
Yeah, I mean, here we have, like, a few days. My last question is, and I apologize if you said this, Mike mentioned the Dell Plan, but where do the area plans fit in to this review in general?
The larger, more, the larger standalone area plans that aren't currently incorporated into your general plan, we're not overhauling those, but the general plan may provide policy direction. So for example, there may be an action item to update that area plan to accomplish A, B, and C. So it provides enough specificity to be meaningful, but it's not an actual update of that plan.
But there's a, maybe a general review of those plans to see
Yes.
if there are inconsistencies in the other demands of the general
Absolutely. And internally, we have to do that. We have to understand those plans and understand. What we don't want to do is allow a plan that's been adopted for years that may be appropriate to change, to dictate what we do in the general plan. As I tell the G-PAC, all cards are on the table, and this is your top-tier document. And so if you want to see something go in a different direction, put it in the general plan. If it's inconsistent with your zoning code, or it's inconsistent with an area plan, don't get hung up on that. Make the general plan say what you want, and then those subordinate plans can later be brought into consistency. You also have some area plans that are currently incorporated into your general plan, and those are certainly on the table. And if there are, need to be left alone and carried forward, that's what we'll do. If they need to be revised and adjusted, that's what we'll do.
But generally, the general plan will set the tone and dictate what, if anything, happens to the other plans, codes, et cetera?
Yes. And I'm a firm believer in that's how it should be. There will be, when we're done with this, there will be aspects of your municipal code, your zoning code, that will be inconsistent now with your general plan. And I use the analogy again of the tail wagging the dog. Your general plan should dictate where the city's headed, and if your zoning code becomes non-compliant with your general plan, then you should update the zoning code, rather than trying to make the general plan match what the code currently says.
If I could just add to that. So as Ben pointed out, there are three area plans that are embedded into the general plan, and the contract is for the consultant to update the general plan. So if any of those three need to be tweaked or amended, that's part of the contract. But the other ones that are implementing the general plan, that are not part of the general plan, then I would envision that if there are any changes that are needed, those would be implementation strategies
Yes.
that the area plans be changed to do something. But then that would be on our dime. We would do that separate and independent.
Based on inconsistencies that arise because
Because of the
arises because of changes to the general
Exactly.
That makes sense. Okay. Thank you very much.
Just a clarification. Which three? Just so we're all speaking the same language.
Oh, I'm sorry. So the NOCA, SOCA, and Santomas are actually part of the general plan. So if they need changes, if, then they're on the hook to actually implement them.
And after public comment, I would, I have a related
Okay. Any other questions before I take public comment? All right. I will stay nearby, because I think we want to talk to you a little bit more, and thank you so far for your work. Susan Landry. I will open the public hearing and call Susan Landry. After that, I have Rebecca Byrne or Byrne?
Hi. I'm Susan Landry. You guys all know me now. I just got off a plane, so I'm so glad I made it. Unfortunately, I missed the presentation, but I just want to let you guys know I'm very honored to be a part of the G-PAC. I'm glad that you made the alternates part of the committee, because now I'm official. I was very impressed at our first meeting of the presentation with the company that has been hired. I was very impressed in the level of education and experience that a lot of the G-PAC members have, and we have ex-water district people, planners, myself as an environmental architect, so I am very happy to be a part of this. I'm very honored. And I really look forward to having some input into how Campbell proceeds. They had a little questionnaire, you know, some, what do you like most? What do you want to see happen? And I think the consensus really was Campbell is a small town. It's rural. Let's try to keep that character and feeling. And what I think the question was, what is it, the one thing that you want to see change? And my overall comment was, I don't want traffic to dictate our city's planning and layout. I'm really sick of the pass-through, cut-through traffic, and, you know, what it does to Campbell. And one final thing is, I really would like the council to reconsider the traffic impact fee topic that had come up a while ago. You know, with the North Forty and some of these other large projects, Campbell will be impacted by other cities. So just as a side note, I would like to see that come up in the next year, but thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Then I have Rebecca Byrne. I can't tell if there's an R or not. It's lovely teal writing that obscures the letters. And then TJ Simone.
Hi, guys. My name's Rebecca Byrne. I'm here on behalf of Housing Choices Coalition. If you haven't heard of us, we're a nonprofit that helps people with developmental disabilities find affordable housing. Currently, we serve 235 adults living at 14 different properties throughout Santa Clara County. So in Campbell, there's 271 people with developmental disabilities. 51% of those are adults who could be living on their own, but only 21 are. So I wanted to come out to this meeting tonight and just talk about if there's any, anything that you're going to be changing in the land use policies that could affect housing for this specific population, to please keep them in mind, because there definitely is this unmet housing need. And yeah, that's about it. Thanks, guys.
All right. Thank you. Then I have TJ Simone.
Hi. My name's TJ Simone. I live on 954 Robin Lane, and I came to support what she just talked about. I have a son who is autistic, who will never work, and he'll be living with me for a long time until I decide where to put him. But I've been in Campbell now for 11 years. I've employed upwards of 100 people off Dell Ave. I'm no longer there, but I like Campbell a lot. I plan on staying here for a long time. And I'd like to see more housing, not just for my son, but for many people with disabilities. I try to do a lot in that segment with our time. And I don't think there's enough of it in general anywhere. And Campbell's such a great place to live. And like someone else said, the nice small-town feel, I really like that for my family and my son. Everything's nice and convenient. We're looking forward to self-driving cars, because he can't drive. But I would really like to see some focus on that with, especially on Dell Avenue, there's so much potential there. It's a beautiful little area that could be so convenient for somebody with disabilities, and all the apartments going up, which, good and bad, it should be pretty easy to put something in there for children and adults with disabilities over 18. So, thank you.
Good. Thank you. Does any other member of the public wish to speak on this item?
Hold on, that's still loud.
All right.
I'm Joanne Fairbanks. I'm a resident of Campbell, as you know. I am privileged as well to serve on the G-PAC committee, and I know the subcommittee worked pretty hard in choosing the consultant. And I wanted to give you some perspective on my first experience at the first meeting. Very often, consultants make a lot of statements and have important things to say, but what was important to me is I noticed that the two consultants that were at that meeting were using their ears more than anything else. They were really paying attention to the comments that were made by the members that were there. And I think hearing often gets us a lot more than talking. So I appreciate the work of the subcommittee, and I think we're off to a really good start. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Joanne. Does any other member of the public wish to speak on this item? All right. If not, I'll close the public hearing and bring our consultant back up, if you don't mind. And while you're walking up there, I'll just say, this issue of developmental disabilities, we've talked about it briefly before. It's an issue near and dear to my heart. And I've come to be aware that there's, our schools in Campbell are particularly good at serving the development of disabled. So I think it really does make sense to pay attention to that fact, and hope that the folks that we do a good job educating can stay here and become Campbell residents even into adulthood. So if there's a way, at least I'd be in favor of trying to work that, in that knowledge into the plan, to the extent that that's appropriate. Who else wanted to speak? Vice Mayor Gibbons, yeah, you had a comment?
Okay. Thank you. And I echo your thoughts. And we did work within the housing element to address this to some extent, so carrying it forward in the broader picture of the general plan, I think, would be very helpful. So that's great. Incorporating, tying into two other comments, incorporating outstanding documents on the Winchester Boulevard Master Plan, the East Campbell Ave Master Plan, and potentially the Dell Avenue Master Plan. I think we'll just have to ask staff to keep you in the loop on any changes at the state level that will make it important to understand what a general plan includes and what it doesn't include. There's some dynamics happening at the state level that it'll be important to make sure we have a proper, solid document. Two is, my, one of my big concerns is the zoning code and clarification of the zoning code issues. So I think you'll find that my consistent topics are what is open space requirements, and in particular, related to the definition of plan developments, and what exactly PD needs to provide. The other topic is the adjacency of uses, and you've touched on that by several different things with talking about our surrounding communities and how we address those. But we also have internal adjacencies, and that's the development versus the established residential, and the blending of new residential with existing residential, for example. Another comment is that there's a lot changing right now with VTA. There's the potential for the ballot measure, the 2040 ballot measure, which will have a significant impact in our transportation. There is, someone mentioned drive-through, cut-through traffic. There is a hypothesis that it will help with that. I have my doubts, but there is a hypothesis. There is also a separate VTA project on realignment of buses, and it is substantive, to be modest in what I use as a term of substantive. It is colossal, and it really impacts Winchester Boulevard and Bascom Ave. So you're going to need to keep an eye on that. That's scheduled to be reviewed and approved in September, and there's a lot of documentation out on that now. So I just offer that as a big deal. Let's see. Oh, one offer of future presentations to the council. We're, I'm going to say, have been a pretty astute group, and we don't need to rehash everything that was done before. We can get a summary of what was done before and then move forward. We don't need to keep revisiting everything from start to finish. That's been a problem for us in the past. And let's see. Was I polite?
Yes.
Thank you.
I plan to wow you with the concise, focused nature of subsequent reports, so I will be laser-focused.
Good. Thank you. Thank you.
And we're good at asking questions, too. And just on two of those points, the point about figuring, making sure that it really reflects what open space is and isn't, as opposed to letting that get developed later, I think will solve, help a lot of our problems going forward. And I think it's an important thing for the community to weigh in on, and really understand what they're weighing in on. So I would echo Vice Mayor Gibbons on that. And also, I would add to her list of projects to keep an eye on, and I'm sure you are, which is the Visona Extension, the light rail extension to, that would eventually serve the Dell Avenue Master Plan area. And although that's not in the ballot measure for VTA, the VTA did just approve funding for, by Rightofway. So the rails are essentially there. The Rightofway is now going to be purchased, and the ER, it's basically a shovel-ready project at this point. And VTA confirmed it as a priority. So there's at least some reason to believe, there's considerable reason to believe that that will go forward. It's just a matter of when, during this plan's lifetime. And I think that that's something that the G-PAC can consider. I don't know if that's, whether you do that in alternative scenarios, or if you just say, yeah, this is probably going to happen, so we just, you know, however you deal with that. But obviously, that's something pretty high on my radar. Councilmember Christina.
Thanks. So after everything that's been discussed tonight, I just want to say that I feel excellent that the subcommittee was able to select the right consultant. So thank you for what you're doing. And I wanted to ask, so through the conversations that you've had so far, and the studying that you've done, were any of the comments that we had about projects that are going on in Campbell, were any of those a surprise or new to you? Like the VTA information, light rail, any of that?
They weren't surprises. I'm not fluent in the details of them yet. And then some of the nuanced details, we have our team of subconsultants preparing the existing conditions report. So our transportation subconsultant's going to be doing the primary write-up and summary of those plans, and more importantly, factoring in how those might influence future traffic patterns, as they're built into the VTA model. So none of these surprised me whatsoever, but I'm not fluent in the details of them all yet.
Just not there yet.
I assure you I will be.
Okay. Yeah, because that was something that we talked about and really focused on, is all right, the whole scope of everything that's happening around, and how that's going to impact us, and to make sure. And I wasn't quite sure if you were at that point, but, you know, staff, there's, if you ever see something that's missing, throw it out there.
Oh, yeah. And we'll be
And I'm pretty sure the council also be willing to continuously bring them up.
I look forward to it.
Councilmember Reston.
Yeah, just a quick comment following up what Councilmember Christina said. I had the opportunity with the Vice Mayor to be on a committee that selects a consultant. It's a hard process. And I think this one went really well, and kudos to Vice Mayor and Councilmember Christina. The presentation was very good, very helpful. But also, I'm happy to hear from two G-PAC members, and Susan Landry and Joanne Fairbanks, the positive feedback we got from the first meeting, which is really important. So this, I just think just the positive feedback that has been really good and very helpful. And I think a good choice was made here.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Katsch.
Yes, one more time. One of the things that was mentioned, I think, by Susan, and I don't, I don't know if Joanna mentioned it, but you had the circulation element. And this is something the council knows that I have been harping on for god knows how long. And by the way, folks, I've been through two general plan studies, once as a planning commissioner, and then early on, way back when, as a member of this council. And just so that we don't have the tail wagging the dog, I hope from out of this study would go some recommendations toward the county VTA, since we just now talked about it. I was sitting in for one of our council members.